Good evening and welcome to our special call July 31st, 2024, meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission. At this time, I would like to introduce our staff: Ashley Kreitz, Executive Director, Urban Development; Zach Pons, Director of Planning; Caitlin Giles, Development Review Manager; Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney. There are nine members of the Planning Commission, all who were appointed by the mayor for stagger terms with the exception of the City Council Representative, who is appointed by the City Council. I ask that the Commission members introduce themselves and state their occupation. Begin with Ms. Hornsby.
Anne Hornsby, Attorney.
This due to UA Campus Development.
Councilwoman Raven Howard.
Eddie Pugh, Retired.
Tim Harrison, General Counsel.
Bill Wright, Business Owner.
There are signup sheets outside for public comment. If you do not sign up, you will be given the opportunity to speak during the public comment portions of the agenda. The Commission will take up items in the order of the agenda. The Commission will receive a presentation from staff regarding zoning text changes necessitated through testing, along with minor changes and updates to the proposed zoning map that they have identified between the creation and present date. The Commission will vote to accept or reject these changes for final recommendations to City Council later this summer. This is not the final vote on these items. The final vote is expected to be in September of 2024. After the staff presentation, the floor will be open to public comment. Staff will assist in reviewing the comments submitted online. Others in attendance will be welcomed after online comments are reviewed. Online comments are separated into two categories: comments of support and comments of concern. Comments of support generally do not require Commission action in terms of a vote. For comments of concern, the Commission will decide whether to accept the proposed changes or leave as is. Individuals wishing to speak, wishing to express support for our opposition will be given three minutes to speak. Only the Planning and Zoning Commission can grant a specified time extension to an individual. Public comment will be received or closed to public comment, and the Commission will open discussion among themselves, preserving the opportunity to vote to accept or reject any proposed changes for final consideration at the review meetings that will take place this year. These proceedings are video-recorded and broadcast live. All public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Please first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction: Regarding zoning text amendments, Sections 11-52-76 of the Code of Alabama states, "The legislative body of such municipalities shall provide for the manner in which such regulations and restrictions and the boundaries of such districts shall be determined, established, and enforced from time to time, amended, supplemented, or changed, and may adopt such ordinance that may be necessary to carry into effect and make effective the provisions of this article." The Planning and Zoning Commission serves as a recommending body to the legislative body. While the zoning text amendments will be considered in pieces, they will not be enforced until the full zoning text is adopted and the zoning map changes implemented. In layman's terms, if there is a vote at any point to recommend changes, they will not be enforced on any property until the City Council adopts a zoning text and zoning map changes formally through many public hearings. I would ask at this time, do any members of the Commission have any conflicts of interest or possible conflicts for any topics on the agenda for discussion this evening? If so, please state for the record.
Mr. Chairman, there may be one on there regarding a lake property. I will address it at the time.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, we will begin. Kreitz.
Good evening, Commission. Happy July 31st. Tomorrow is August. You know what that means?
The kids are back.
The kids are back! And we are about a month and a half away from putting a bow on framework code updates. As you know, we are beginning our map wrap-up meetings tonight. And so, before we set forth, let's go over some meeting expectations, our usual group of comments. So Steering Committee members, of course, if you are here and present this evening, please note your role in the process, just say you are a member of the Steering Committee when you are at the podium. For our Planning and Zoning Commission members, I know you've had a chance to review the proposed map amendments ahead of the meeting. Just refrain from arguing with public commenters. Listen, ask questions if you don't understand need clarification, be respectful, and desire an expedited proceeding. For everyone, meetings will begin at 5:00 PM and end at 7:00 PM. If we don't finish a topic, we will roll it into the next scheduled meeting. We will also be utilizing a three-minute timer for all parties, visible to all parties tonight, and only the Planning and Zoning Commission members can extend that time that is given. Staff is managing the flow of the meeting for efficiency, and you'll see that reflected in how we are handling those map comments. All of them will be addressed tonight, as long as we have enough time, but we made sure to get them in an order that was most expeditious. If anyone is joining us for the first time tonight, the zoning map draft update process, let's do a quick history lesson for our future land use character map and the creation of our draft zoning map that we've been reviewing since January. So, in our participation to form the framework document itself, you'll see the representation that we had in addition to all the meetings that led up to the West Tuscaloosa Community Inventory that was adopted in September of 2018 and wrapped into the framework document itself. You've got 325 individuals that formed on the future, 450 at the open house, where we received 137 comment cards, 80 map comments, and 27 text comments, before we had it adopted in February of 2021. We had a large representation, 30 Steering Committee members, and you'll see their participation records on the screen. So as we develop that future land use and character map, let's remember together that it is not a mandate for development or for rezonings themselves. We're using it as a policy guide implemented through our zoning regulations and also through public and private investment decisions. We are using it as a basis for future zoning updates, and that's what we're in the middle of today. So if anyone has come across or taken a gander at our future land use and character map, these are familiar categories for you this evening. To create that zoning map, we used, of course, the future land use character map, existing zoning for properties, current land uses, and our own professional judgment and expertise. The planning staff is five-strong, the admin staff is four-strong, and so all of us together sat down with assistance from the Office of Operations and a few other groups to create the zoning map. So, of course, you saw those specific areas of the city getting posted to the framework website, blast emails going out saying, "Hey, friends, it's time. Take a look at your section of the city." "Hey, friends, it's time. Make sure you're taking a look." And we have had those special called meetings for those specific areas, and as we promised, folks, if your comment didn't make it, if you were after the fact and you said, "Oh, my gosh, I'm in North Tuscaloosa and I didn't realize this meeting was happening, but I still have a comment," these are those moments where we're circling back. We're getting back to those comments at this evening's meeting. So, those new zoning districts, we are all familiar with at this point in time. So let's get into our final draft, where we are and where we're going, and some of the changes that have happened over the course of the last six months. Generally, what you will see are threefold. First, there were a few oddities on Lake Tuscaloosa itself. Everything below the acquisition line will show as open space, the lake itself. Today, that property is shown as R1, as is most of the property along Lake Tuscaloosa. The lake now, of course, will carry open space zoning, so some previous versions of the map just had some funky lines, as a technical term. What you'll also see are that rail yards and active rail lines are going to show as heavy industrial throughout the city. We thought this was the most fair thing to do in order to show where those rail lines are, first of all, instead of carrying the zoning of surrounding land uses to the center point of that railroad right-of-way. So we've gone in to make that change so that when people are looking at investing in property, they can quickly and easily see where that rail line is as well. And then we have also put in a concerted effort to make sure that neighborhood lakes or ponds, homeowner association golf courses also show up as open space. So a good example would be the Woodland Forest Golf Course goes in as open space.
Ms. Kreitz, back to the active rail lines.
Yeah.
Are there inactive rail lines out there in places?
There, yes, there's a couple inactive rail lines. Think about the one behind Pinehurst and Gildeswood, Sherwood area. That's an inactive rail line. The rails are up, and so...
So what, the zoning on that will be, what, open space?
For those that are inactive, we just carried the surrounding, because it shows as right-of-way, and so we just carried the surrounding zoning to the center point of that right-of-way like we would on a street.
Even if they're different zones?
Yes, correct.
Alright.
Yep. Alright, so let's get into the North Tuscaloosa. And we're going to hit each area, just like we did each individual meeting, and just highlight some changes for you. So this is the North Tuscaloosa Lakes and Airport area. Of course, it is a large chunk of property. Districts 1 and 3 represented on this screen, you'll see that here. So taking a look first at that airport area, what you will see for all of these is what you saw originally, the first draft of the map, and then a quick change, second draft of the map. And to highlight what happened here and what changes were made, we, on that first box, we made sure to take a look at the property ownership. There's been some rail yard expansion in this location here. And then the second box, that is the Alabama Forestry Commission and Fish and Wildlife, and so that really needed to go in as institutional public instead of, we had previously had it as highway commercial. So just a couple small changes to clean up between property owners so they had consistent zoning and public land uses. Getting into, and if y'all, I think to do this, as we move forward, what I may ask you to do is concur, and then as we move forward, if you concur with the changes that staff has made, then we'll move forward, and of course, there are opportunities for public comment. These changes have been available the entire month for the public to review, so...
And no one's commented on these?
Not on these, no.
Fair enough. Commission, all those in favor of these modifications, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
And I think that'll be the cleanest way to handle these, in my mind. Alright, so this is the area north, the northern portion of the lake, I suppose. This is that first brush at it. The second one, and you'll see the biggest change between these two. Up here at the top, we have annexed in Emerald's Edge in the time, and so that came in as Lake Residential. And you'll see that highlighted there. That really isn't much of a map change, but I guess it does bear concurrence.
Is that the only one?
That's the only one.
What is that, north of there?
North of there, that is an old, that's an old annexation that has been around for a long time. I don't remember what that neighborhood is, though, off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
It has never been developed?
No.
You put the, there we go, that's our area right there, correct, with the black box around it previously?
Yes, the black box area.
Alright, Commission, all those in favor of this modification, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
Alright, Commission, we are now moving down towards the southern half of this, and this was the original, what was shown, the proposed changes, and remember that some of these proposed changes are also what has come out of the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings themselves. And so all the things that y'all have already voted on are now reflected in this map as well. So let's drill in on some of these areas with a little bit more detail. This is along New Watermelon Road, heading north. You've got the Yacht Club off in this area here, and so there's really three major changes that you can see. One was taking the Signal Hill neighborhood from Lake Residential back to SFR3. Lake Residential would have made all of those lots very non-conforming. There are three today, SFR3 is most appropriate for them. As we move further to the south, a similar situation happened on the east side of New Watermelon Road. That neighborhood also, the lots were too small for Lake Residential to be the most appropriate thing for that neighborhood, and so while we were changing that neighborhood, we grabbed the property undeveloped to the east, and then we discussed with Mr. Quarter, he just had this townhome development approved, and we discussed with him, and he agrees that MR1 is what he would like to see on that piece of property for himself as well. So those are the major changes on this portion. Then, at the Rice Mine Road and Old Colony area, really, this is just reflecting mostly in this area. You saw those changes all came in front of you through many, many dots on the map.
Do we need to approve the last one?
Uh, we could...
We're going to do it on a bulk basis or individual?
Whatever you want to do. What is easiest for you tonight?
I mean, does anyone, I guess I would say this, I would do a group unless someone would like to take a individual vote.
Individual? I'm cool with that.
That's fine.
Alright, so as we get into this next slide, as I mentioned, along Old Colony and Rice Mine Road, you saw most of those changes as a result of requests from public through a series of dots. Some other changes that you see between these two are multifamily residential being removed. These two are our assisted living facilities and elder care homes. That is actually a special exception use in the neighborhood commercial zoning district, and so instead of keeping multifamily residential, which might be inappropriate from a scale perspective, we proposed changing it back to neighborhood commercial. And then there was a single-family home tucked up here that we accidentally had changed to neighborhood commercial. We need to take it back to SFR1. There were some boundary changes regarding where the open space is for the Rock Quarry boat landing, and then you saw these changes in the middle here as a result of your own votes at that January meeting. Alright, and then at the intersection of the Eastern Northern Bypass and Rice Mine Road Northeast, taking a look at this, we kind of wrung our hands a bit and said, "Gosh, neighborhood commercial is not appropriate." Because of the work that is happening with McRice Ferry Road, the fact that gas stations are not permitted, that McRice Ferry and that intersection of Rice Mine Road Northeast is really vehicle-oriented as opposed to pedestrian-oriented, which is the intent of neighborhood commercial, we believe that GC in this area is the correct zone instead. And that's all I have in North Tuscaloosa. Would you like to take them batch at a time, or how would you like to handle that?
We'll take the batch, alright.
Love it.
No one brought up any particular issue on anything. So, Commission, of course, we have the zoning changes for the lake area. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
Alright, let's move into West Tuscaloosa now, and so this is that area bounded by the river to the north, westernmost boundary, I-20 to the south, and then basically 359 and 28th Avenue. This encompasses Council Districts 1 and 2. This was that original zoning map that was shown, and then a few changes that have happened over time since the February and March meetings. Remember, this was the one map that carried into two meetings. A lot of passionate folks came out in this area, and we appreciate it because we feel like we finally got it right. Some minor changes that we've got here, the Western River Walk, we needed to make sure the boundaries of the open space were correct, and so we pulled it further into the property to the east. In this railroad hub area...
Can you go back one sec? What's the other change on that?
Where?
On the northern corner of that?
Oh, yes, that was, I'm sorry. That circle, oh, you can circle things? Oh, Zach, I was like, whoa, this is new!
That'd be great, it's good.
That is a city-owned lot that we realized was ours and needed to be changed to institutional public. Yes, thank you for catching that. The railroad hub area, this is between Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, north of 15th Street, kind of tucked in there. It spans between a little bit of that downtown area and West Tuscaloosa. So this IP here, I think this is a good way to orient ourselves. This is the cemetery, this is TDOT's vehicular hub, and this is that rail line behind us. And so the biggest change that we needed to make in this area was taking that rail line, or that rail hub, and making it IH. One of the other things that we were able to do, though, in looking at the existing land uses, is remove IG from these two pieces of property based on the existing land use and take it down to a less intense industrial zone to IL. And so we have proposed doing that in this area. We'll get into some of those, the multifamily residential on this next slide. The box just got a little bit bigger. Alright, so in the 21st Street area, west of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, the browns, the brown shades of multifamily/higher-density MR1 have changed between these two screens. You see on that left-hand side, a lot of multifamily residential. The challenge with multifamily residential is that it is a two-story minimum, and so that really didn't meet the character of those multifamily dwellings that are in this area. And so in order to make sure that the character of the area is maintained and improved upon, we have taken that multifamily residential and we propose rezoning it down to MR1, which allows single-family, townhome, and duplex. And so that's the biggest change that you see here as well. In the Reese Pfeiffer Avenue and Cusett Street area, again, what we were able to do, this is Tamco here. Tamco was originally shown as heavy industrial, and so in its surrounding, it owns the surrounding properties as well. And so instead of having one heavy industrial use within light industrial on the borders, we proposed taking everything that Tamco owns in this area and putting it in as industrial general. The same buffers apply that were against light industrial as well. It's just that the consistent zoning for all of their property is there. And then we also, there was a piece of city-owned property here that we identified and needed to put in as institutional public. And then one final spot on the West Tuscaloosa maps, we have had a series, as you know, a series of rezonings in this area, specifically this property along Foster's Ferry Road. The City Council recently rezoned that property to ML, or Light Manufacturing, so to be consistent, we have now placed that property in as light, or IL, light industrial, and then also DHR has been very open about their intentions to construct here, and so that property needs to be institutional public to meet their needs, and then aligning the rest of the zoning along Foster's Ferry with the current land uses. That's what I've got in that area. Any questions?
Any concerns from anyone about those changes? Alright, Commission, based on the modifications of the western district changes, all those in favor of those changes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
Alright, y'all, let's get into the downtown and university area. Of course, this is downtown and university. With the council districts, you're looking at council districts 1, 4, and 5. Mr. Tyner is now part of the downtown and university area. I know he is thrilled by that. So this was the original map that you saw, and the biggest change is just going to happen, I'm going to circle it now, so we can watch it change. So that is the Gates at Cedar Crest. The Gates at Cedar Crest today are zoned MX3. It's a condo/apartment building, and previously, we had it designated as MFRU, or multifamily residential university district. The intent of that zone is for things that are walkable for our student population. This property is not walkable to the university campus and actually seems to serve a bit more of the general population, and so we proposed making that change, just taking it to multifamily residential. And that's the only change.
This is the downtown district, correct?
Yes.
Hey, Commission, this is a modification of the downtown district seen here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
Alright, Commission, let's get into the eastern growth area. Of course, this is what we defined as the eastern growth area, carries all the way over to Mercedes, and then follows its way all the way up to the Black Warrior River, carries along Hargrove Road and Cedar Crest. Council Districts 5 and 6 represented here. This was the original zoning map that we discussed and had a lot of lively comment on, again, a lot of folks who care about this area as well. And this is the map that was, with the changes that came from the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as a couple from staff, we'll highlight them very briefly and broadly because this map was actually, it was in fantastic shape, we felt. And what we have highlighted here are, as I mentioned earlier, the neighborhood lakes and golf courses. So you've got the woodland forest, yes, woodland, we've got a golf course, tall pines, there we are. And then you've got a couple neighborhood lakes smattered throughout this area, and those are the changes that we've proposed here.
Any issues with these changes? Mission, of course, we have the eastern district changes, modifications. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
Alright, we've got two more map sections, y'all, before we get into public comment tonight. This is the Alberta Midtown and Greensboro area. You'll see, again, a huge swath of land running from the Black Warrior River down along the Spine and McFarland Boulevard, north of I-20, carrying all the way over to Greensboro, south of 15th Street. You are looking at council districts 2, 5, 6, and 7, and a little bit of 4, actually, as well. So this was the original map that you saw back in, I believe it was our May meeting, with a couple of changes, and let's talk about those changes. So the first one is along Jack Warner Parkway Northeast at, near the eastern bypass area. So this property here, and you'll see it on the other side, that is the Boy Scouts. The Boy Scouts location and the property that they own, we originally had it as SFR3 because today it is R3 for some reason, and so that is really not an appropriate zone for that facility and that use, and so we proposed changing it to general commercial, as you see already in that area. And then another couple of changes in University Boulevard East. The biggest change, as you'll see, is in the curve of University Boulevard East, and then along 25th Avenue East. In this location, there was a little bit of general commercial that was originally identified, and based on the land uses, the proximity to those homes that exist today, and primarily the existing land uses, NC was perfectly acceptable in this area and continues on what is already existing, just without an intensity of land use nearby. just without, um, an intensity of land use nearby.
Any, Commissioner, having any issues with these modifications? Commissioner, before we add the modifications to these, to the, what do we call that area? Alberta?
Mid, midtown.
Midtown and Alberta. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it.
Alright, y'all, the last map area is the Skyland Boulevard corridor, Highway 69 South. It's, it's the most recent, the most fresh on our minds. Uh, we just looked at it in our June meeting. Of course, it's everything south of I-20, and to the west of Hargrove Road, um, everything within our boundaries, but also, and most importantly, only that within our city limits. So if you are not in the city limits today, we're not zoning anything involving your property. Uh, this is council districts two, six, and seven. And of course, here is that zoning map that you saw last month. Couple of minor changes, uh, that we have seen and will highlight briefly for you. Um, you've got two areas here. Uh, one is another golf course. No, those are neighborhood lakes, I'm sorry. Neighborhood lakes in this area. And then, in this box here, uh, there was another assisted living facility, um, that we had originally shown as multifamily, and, or no, I'm sorry. Yes, we originally showed it as multifamily and took it to a commercial zoning district instead, um, of it staying multifamily. So, that's what we got.
Commissioner, before we add the modifications to the Skyland Boulevard 69 South corridor, any issues? Haven't heard none. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it.
Alright, Commissioner, as staff is preparing, uh, the screen for our public comment process, um, as I mentioned earlier, what we have, what we've been able to do is go through, and we'll pull them up on the screen, and you'll be able to see that list of all comments. Um, and, uh, what we attempted to do was to go in the order that they were submitted, um, but also taking some, some logical groupings. Um, you know, if an individual has multiple pieces of property that they have commented on, let's take care of the stuff that they're concerned with, so they don't have to make multiple trips up, up to the podium. So, we're on this adventure together. We've got this three-minute timer that we'll be using, available to all parties. Remember that only the planning commission can grant a time extension, and, uh, there will be some comments that are yay-go-team comments, and some comments, and those won't need, um, a vote, of course. But if someone is requesting a change to the map, I will ask that you make a decision on those as they are, um, as they come up. So, as we go on, um, there are a couple of comments that are outside the city limits, um, and we're gonna han- we're gonna handle these really quickly. Uh, Mr. Keen made a comment on this property here, uh, and it just said, "I own 54 Keen Drive." What was the discussion about? Um, I emailed Mr. Keen and just let him know his property was outside the city limits, and, and we were sorry if we worried him. Um, and so, no vote is necessary on this comment. But as I mentioned, we are going to hit every comment on the map tonight, so you can see, um, we can, we'll scroll at the end of this meeting, and y'all will be able to see that we have, um, hit everything. The other comment is from Edmund Sexton Jr. Uh, and he's got property along McRice Ferry Road. Uh, he says, "White Oaks LLL, LLC believes the property would be best suited to some sort of commercial zoning, considering it's situated between a highway and McRice Ferry Road. I reached out to Mr. Sexton just to clarify which property, uh, he was discussing. It was actually, uh, this property to the south of his dot, and I said we would be happy to entertain an annexation at some juncture in time when they are prepared." So no vote is necessary for that one. Alright, Caroline Sandell, um, placed a couple of comments in the North River area after, uh, the north, uh, the north map. So this first comment is on 2500 Yacht Club Bay northeast. It's a comment of concern. Um, I think the zoning should be, has been a tricky, a tricky thing for a lot of folks, and we've been working through a lot of that. Um, the comment is, "I am not in support of adding a commercial district in this location. It is a neighborhood, and commercial location would negatively impact the community." Um, as, as y'all are familiar, this property is currently the Jack Warner Hotel at North River Yacht Club. It is zoned BH today. Um, Lake Commercial is a much less intense zoning district, uh, while still allowing that, uh, current land use to continue on. I don't believe Ms. Sandell is present this evening. No, she is not. So, uh, Commissioner?
So this is a vote, voting item, because it isn't there, an issue of concern. So, am I hearing that we'd like to keep it as it is, which would be the?
Lake Commercial, LC.
LC. Is there a motion to accept the staff's LC zoning for this property?
Fuck it.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it.
Right. Uh, Ms. Sandell also has a comment on this piece of property, uh, on Newport Drive. It is a comment of concern. Uh, she says, "I am not in favor of multifamily development adjacent to the lake. We should be reducing the density of construction and locations adjacent to our reservoir." Um, this property, of course, is proposed to be zoned lake multifamily. Uh, today, the property is zoned R4, which is an, a multifamily zone.
Like you said, it's lying, correct?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion to maintain the current zoning?
Motion, motion approved.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it.
Alright, and then Ms. Sandell has one final comment along the Northern Riverwalk area, and, um, it's a comment of support. And she says, "I'm in favor of the new open space district." So, um, just a little happy comment, no vote needed tonight on that one. Alright, the next comments we've got are from Ms. Lois Taylor, um, on the property located at 23rd Street and Donna Washington Avenue. Uh, and so, there's a few comments on these, and there's, uh, so the original one that Caitlin, or Ms. DiDomenico has brought up on the screen, uh, was from the night following the meeting on February 29th, and it is a comment of concern. And it says, "Haley, thank you for speaking with me last night at the west Tuscaloosa zoning map review meeting. We were introduced by Raven Howard regarding the new proposed zoning for my two adjacent properties located at 2209 Donna Washington Avenue and 2930 23rd Street. Currently, both properties are zoned BN, would, and would be changed to NC according to the new zoning map. However, the use of the two properties is more aligned with the GC zoning. Like with BN, GC would allow the properties to be used for a wide range of retail and service establishments, and not be limited to just neighborhood-serving uses. Taylor's used carpet and furniture operated in Tuscaloosa for over 40 years, serving local residents. The business closed in 2019 and will be developed for future use. I thereby request that my two adjacent properties located at 2209 Donna Washington Avenue and 2930 23rd Street be zoned GC. Haley, thank you for your assistance. I look fo- I look to hear from you soon with a determination I can be reached at." And so, there's that comment, and then there is another one from the other day, July 11th. Alright, "Thank you in advance for your consideration. If possible, we would like to appeal the NC zoning proposed for our two adjacent properties located at the corner of Donna Washington Avenue and 23rd Street. As discussed at the March 27th zoning map meeting, Taylor's used carpet and furniture is nestled between two public parks and five churches, and is about 800 feet from a convenience store slash gas station. Over 40 years, the business provided a unique offering to the area focused on selling major budget items versus minor everyday necessities. In 2019, prior to the closing of the business and the passing of the family patriarch, we are embarking on a pivot into the wholesale gardening supply market, and we have strategically started to shift our product offerings to outdoor carpet and furniture to capitalize on an emerging demand. Currently, both properties are zoned BN and would be changed to NC according to the new zoning map. However, the future use of the two properties is more aligned with the GC zoning. One of the many lessons we have learned over the years is that the survival of our family business has depended on its ability to reach customers beyond location and its ability to pivot as the business aged and weathered economic downturns. The current BN designation allowed such pathways. However, the proposed NC designation does not. Like with BN, GC would allow the business to operate as a major budget item store and not be limited to just neighborhood-serving uses. As such, we request that our two adjacent properties located at 2209 Donna Washington Avenue and 2930 23rd Street be zoned GC. Attached are present-day photos of the two properties. With deep respect, Lois A. Taylor." And we have those photos, um, from Ms. Taylor. Ms. Taylor is here tonight. So, do you have any questions for us?
Was this, we saw this, was that the zoning conversation, or was it actually at the, one of the planning and zoning meetings?
This, you saw this, uh, this property and these comments at the February and March meetings.
Right, and we?
The planning commission did vote at that time to maintain the NC designation, um, but in this process, of course, you've got the ability to, to come back and, and make your case again.
And actually, as I recall, it, it appeared that the, the, the current proposed uses that she's talking about, um, would still fit within the zoning that's theirs. It's more the future potential development.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I think, fresh memory.
Yeah, and our issue was, we were afraid to change anything on the unknown, or what it could be.
Right.
So we, we, we were, the comfort we had in keeping, as you can see, was the logical, which did not, if they want to come back and ask for a GC's only layer of change, they can. So...
When we know where the specific use would be.
Right, that's right.
Exactly. And, and I would like to say, this is in my district, and I'm very familiar with these properties, and I know the property owner. So, um, as of right now, I would like to still stick with the staff's recommendation for this zoning, but I am interested in what future growth, uh, for business in this area could look like. So I'm not saying that I would be, um, against a special exception on this, this zoning in the future.
Hundred percent, I agree. So this was a, was there two comments on this one?
Yes, and Ms. Taylor is here tonight, if you'd like her to come up to the podium.
Okay, I mean, if we'd like to come speak, I mean, we got three minutes. Ms. Taylor, if you'd like to come make a comment.
Uh, Leah Taylor, 2706 39th Ward. Um, good evening, um, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak with you once again. Um, if you would show the picture. At the last March meeting, unfortunately, I wasn't able to provide you with, um, updated pictures of the property, or provide you with an illustration or explaining of what we are planning on using the property for. This is Taylor's carpet. Um, it's been operating for over 40 years. Um, our wheelhouse is being able to sell products, uh, within that major, um, budget items, um, arena. And we have done so, so tremendously well. With the passing of our family patriarch, we were at that time embarking, um, on pivoting the business into outdoor carpet and furniture, with also a focus on garden supply, um, business. And we had made, um, extreme strides in making that happen. If you would show the next picture. We own these two properties, and we spent, um, after its passing, much time, um, cleaning up the property and getting the property ready, um, for that next phase. If you show the next picture. One of the questions I believe you had, uh, um, uh, interest in as far as Donna Washington, where is it located? Um, and during my additional research, I found out that Donna Washington is a major roadway, just like Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. Um, about three, the, the average daily traffic volume is about 300 cars go, 3,000 cars go up and down the street. So we have really been able to benefit from having that high visibility within that particular area. And as I mentioned before, it is nestled, um, between two city parks and five churches. If you show the next slide.
While they're doing that, Ms. Taylor, guys, a quick question. Those, I'm assuming that's painter's tape on those, on the building there?
Mm-hmm.
That's for windows, I'm assuming you're gonna?
Yes, we're looking to reinstall the original windows in the store.
Well, one question for staff before she continues. Under her planned use of outdoor gardening, et cetera, NC is acceptable?
Everything that we've heard her mention in her comments, and then something that NC would be allowed.
Go ahead.
And one of the additional comments that you had regarding parking. Um, the city, when they put in these, um, uh, massive sidewalks, they provided us with wide curb cuts and driveways to allow our customers to come onto the property and park. And with the second driveway, it allows our truck, delivery trucks, and supply trucks to actually go onto the side of the store. So we kind of meet that criteria. The last thing you had a question about, what are we gonna use it for? Well, it's gonna be used in the, the same current use, um, that is being used now. However, the focus is gonna be on outdoor carpet and furniture and a wholesale gardening supply business, because we're really trying to capitalize on the existing trend, the emerging trends in the market. So, as you see, we feel that this property need to be zoned GC versus NC within the area, because we do want to capitalize on the traffic that goes up and down, down to Washington Avenue.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. I'm, I'm gonna defer to Ms. Howard. I think what she stated was, I think how this body feels. NC seems to be an appropriate zoning, and if there's a philosophy change on the businesses going forward that wouldn't fit in that, then you have every right to come before this body and ask for a zoning change to a GC. I think what we're gonna say again is that we're uncomfortable rezoning something to a more aggressive, uh, use or zoning. We don't know what the use is, or could be. So, I'm gonna defer, and I'm gonna support Ms. Howard and her comments, and that's kind of my, my two cents. So, I don't have any questions. My questions are answered, unless anyone else has any questions for Ms. Taylor.
Thank you for your consideration.
Ms. Taylor, let me, let me, I guess, you understand what you're trying to do here fits in that current zone?
Current.
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 You can do, you can do, you can do this product in this current zone.
Okay.
Is that the way it is now, without any doubt?
Okay. From my understanding, and I have to go back and read through, um, the criteria that they established, um, that is not going to be allowed. Um, even the current business that operated before, our carpet and the furniture business wouldn't be allowed.
That's not what we allow. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, we, I mean, we would be the ones that would look at that table and determine that use, and we're saying to you guys tonight that, you know, what we have heard is appropriate.
The way she is described, it fits in the current class.
It does, yes.
So, that's, that's our concern about rezoning. Um, now, as everybody said here, if, if, we're not opposed to rezoning it, if, if, if something, if something triggers an issue that causes it not to fit in this current zoning, I'm gonna tell you, one of the nicest people I've ever seen, I enjoy talking to. Uh, you, you, and I would, I would bend over backwards to do whatever we could to make it, make this happen.
Okay.
That area deserves something like this. I'm proud to see you doing it. We'll, this board will support your every endeavor. But we feel like what you're trying to do will fit into this, and, and we're concerned with rezoning it to a broader zone, that something might change down the road after me and you are gone. Does that make sense to you?
It makes sense.
Are you okay, Liv, with the, the way it is now? I mean, it's on to operate your business?
Um, yes, I mean, I have no other choice. Um, um, what my plans are, is to, uh, continue to develop the business, to operate in a GC world, and hopefully, um, the city will give me an opportunity to do so.
If you come back before this board, anything that even infringes this other requirement, and they don't give it to you, we're gonna not, we're gonna not hit it.
What's your name again?
I think we all look forward to shopping at your garden.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Alright, Commissioner, this was a question of concern. Uh, I, I make the motion that we retain the NC zoning per previous staff recommendation. I mean, all those, I mean, I need a motion in a second of that. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it.
Alright, Commissioner, we now are, uh, looking at comments, and we're looking at comments from Deborah Minor, um, who has put in a few after the, uh, the March meeting. Which one did you click on, Ms. DiDomenico? Those, got you. Alright, so these are the corner of Joe Malasham Parkway and 31st Street. Uh, this first comment is of concern, and, uh, her comment is, "West End Needs Admonities. Please mark for GC Commercial District to pull in franchise fast food, I-59 with over 100,000-plus travelers, bypass toll bridge, 26,000 residents in D1 and D2, Foster's residence, plus the factory employees in plants D1 and D2." bypass toll bridge, 26,000 residents in D1 and D2, fosters residence, plus the factory employees in plants D1 and D2. Those properties today, on that north side, are zoned R2. And with what is going on in that area, we felt, based on the Future Landes character map as well, that ML was the most appropriate for this corner. And also, and most of these comments, we'll, of course, read them into the record, but just looking at them as a whole, because they all say the same thing, basically. These comments here, of course, you just saw this piece of property in the last couple of months for a rezoning from R2 to ML to allow for a warehouse in this area. So the proximity, Ms. Minor is absolutely correct. The proximity to I-2059 off of Joe Malasham, if the toll bridge were not such an impediment for normal travelers, I would wholeheartedly agree. But with how it is today, and it's mostly used for industrial, ML, or I'm sorry, IL is the most appropriate zone in staff's perspective.
You said this would, we can vote on all three at one time, or we got to take each one?
We'll click into them really quickly, just so you can, for transparency's sake, you'll see it's the same comment on all three. And yes, I believe you can look at all three of these together.
We'll do them one by one, just so we can, you got to write notes anyway. Okay, Commissioner.
Well, I would say again that if, if a fast food place, franchise wanted to develop that and was able to do so, we would re, we would consider. But in the meantime.
Agreed.
It seems inappropriate to, to change it without a definite plan.
Okay. You have the comments about these three parcels. We'll take them one by one again. All right, Commissioner, of course, we have an area of concern on three pieces of property. First one we'll take up. All those in favor of retaining the recommended, recommended zoning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Second parcel. Same issue. Retain, oppose, IL zoning. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Third parcel, retain the IL zoning. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, Ms. Minor has one more comment on this piece of property that is owned by the United States government, the Army Corps of Engineers. She says, the West End needs amenities. Please mark for GC Commercial District to pull in franchise fast food, I-59 with hundreds of thousand-plus travelers every day. The bypass toll bridge, 26,000 residents in D1 and D2, fosters residence, plus the factory employees in plants D1 and D2, plus the visitors to the Elevate Projects and Sports Tournaments that the city is planning on bringing in. All of this can feed into sustainability of these food amenities clinics needed in West End. This is the area in which I attempted to bring to your attention during the zoning meeting that was marked for discussion. This property is owned, again, by the United States government, and institutional public is the appropriate zone for it.
Okay, Commissioner, retain the current zoning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, ayes have it.
All right, we have three comments from James Bearden on three different properties. He put these comments in back in June. So this first comment, you have already handled. And so Mr. Bearden at 2714 16th Street, the property was zoned multifamily when he made this comment. And he says, I think the zoning should be MR1 or mixed residential 1. And we agreed. And so we, as staff, actually proposed that this be taken to MR1 instead. Multifamily was not the most appropriate in this location. The next comment from Mr. Bearden is located here on, I believe this is 3rd Street East and 23rd Avenue East. This is a comment of concern. Mr. Bearden believes this property should be SFR4. I would like this property to be SF4. That property to the, to the west is zoned MR1. The property surrounding it is zoned SFR3. I don't believe Mr. Bearden is here tonight.
Do we, do we know why he wants this changed?
He had some discussions with staff about doing a duplex here.
Larger lot, I guess he's thinking of getting more. And the, that would be spot zoning. Any, any comments or? Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it doesn't fall within our guidelines, trying to avoid spot zoning, so. Anyones have comments or proposals to keep as designated by staff? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
And Mr. Bearden has one more comment on this piece of property along 4th Street East, and it is a similar comment. It says, I think the zoning should be SFR4.
Same, same issue here, Commissioner. All those in favor of keeping this as staff recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
All right, the next comment is from Wilson Moore, and we are going all the way up to the tippy-top along Marina Drive. So this property was recently annexed into the city limits for the new dockside restaurant, and we had it identified originally as Lake Residential. It should be Lake Commercial instead. And Mr. M, Mr. Moore, sorry, said this is the dockside restaurant and pier should be Lake Commercial. We agree with him.
Agreed. Any other comments or areas of concern?
Do you remember, explain this issue?
I understand. Commissioner, we, all those in favor of supporting the change to LC Lake Commercial District, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, Commissioner, let's fly next into the country club area. I believe you have to hit update real quick. All right, Mr. Connolly has put in a number of comments on the former Tuscaloosa Country Club location. We'll click into a majority of them. Some of the comments are things like, current zoning is incorrect. Rather, it is R3. Your current zoning is incorrect. It is R3. The overarching theme, though, of these comments, I think, is actually that I think the zoning should be GPD or General Planned Development District. I reached out to Mr. Connolly ahead of this meeting, and I don't believe he or any representatives of Tuscaloosa Country Club are here this evening. I reached out to Mr. Connolly to explain to him how GPD was being applied in our, in this current process that we're in. Of course, if a planned unit development has been approved and construction is active on it, we are classifying that property as, as GPD. And for the riverfront zoning district, what we will, what will happen is as this property redevelops, it will redevelop as a RPD or a riverfront planned development. So Mr. Connolly is absolutely correct that planned development is the way to go for this piece of property. It's just, I think, a little bit of a misunderstanding, and I wish we'd been able to, to touch base with each other beforehand.
So can we take one vote on all of these?
I'm okay with that.
We got some nods over there. I'm going with them. All right, Commissioner. All those in favor of keeping the current recommended zoning by staff, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, Commissioner, we are flying now over to 13th Street East. Mr. Edwards has a number of comments on properties in this area. We'll read each one of those. Mr. Edwards is here tonight as well. So this first comment is on 1720 13th Street East. It says, I think the zoning should be IL Industrial Light District. Comment is, we intend to redevelop this into property that is better suited for IL zoning, small business development sites. The next one is on 1716 13th Street East, same comment. On 1712 13th Street East, same comment. 1722 13th Street East, same comment. And the final one at 1804 with the same comment. The proposed, what you see on the map is SFR2. And Mr. Edwards is proposing a rezoning to IL. He is here this evening for questions.
And there are homes on these, correct?
There are homes on them today, yes, ma'am, and there are homes across the street as well.
This is the same situation Ms. Taylor had, so, but we'll hear these guys.
The, the lot to the, to the east there is not on the east.
These are residential homes today, yes.
Good evening. My name is William Edwards. I reside at 4107 Churchill Lane, 35406. Yeah, so the, I, I represent various ownership entities that have ownership, including to the north of what I'm proposing be changed. We've had some ideas about redeveloping this into sort of like a combination mini-storage and small office, what you might call like business, like small business incubators. Actually, I have some, some copies of, you know, other sites that we had, you know, kind of drawn some inspiration from. These are, whoever said it was correct, these are currently small family homes on this site. And actually, to the east of that, the circled purple, those are also small family homes that we don't currently own. But as we had this site drawn and engineered, we felt like redeveloping the small family homes for an ingress egress on 13th Street East made sense as part of the larger plan for redevelopment with an additional, probably main ingress egress on Kicker Road as well.
Again, I must say, I think it's very similar to the case we heard Ms. Taylor, that it's currently a residential zoning, it's currently residential houses on it. I don't think we were largely in favor of rezoning without a known use of that reclassification to the E-class zone. So I, I mean, I think we'd listen to it if you wanted to come back and propose something at a later date. But at this, at this time, I'm more comfortable keeping it where it is. That's just.
I can save you a little time with me. I mean, based on, based on what you're asking, if you ask to come with a mini-storage or a freight-type facility or a Russell Residential, I won't take that. I mean, unless, unless you figure a way to not to affect the neighborhood adjacent.
So.
Go, go, go all the way out to Kicker Road and budget-related. I, I wouldn't put this, I wouldn't, I wouldn't approve a spot, spot, I call, what I call a spot classification here like this, where you got access, you'd be accessing certain.
So, so we had considered how it would affect the, the property, you know, to the east there. And when we had an engineer draw it, they had suggested that we put up some privacy fencing.
So what I would say to you is, before I would even do this, you had to bring back, draw and look at it. Right now, you can't leave it alone, and then you come up with project, right, of course, we'll consider.
I, I currently have drawings for it, if you'd like to see it.
That's my, my opinion, that's, that's not this process.
No, that's in the process for that.
That's going through his own.
That's his own application process.
Okay.
That's not what this process is for.
Sure, okay.
It's in the free swing.
Certainly. Okay, so even with the surrounding properties, like to the north with the, with industrial light classification, and then north of the railroad, and then.
I understand what you're saying. This is a planning and zoning decision. This isn't, this isn't for this process.
What we're saying is, you, you, you still have an opportunity to do that, but this is just not the time and place to do that. But you have a free right to present that, but not in this setting. That's all I'm saying.
I see. Okay.
You know, this doesn't, this doesn't preclude you from asking and making that request. It just has to go through the planning and zoning process to do that.
Okay.
But I think Mr. Harrison is correct, that I think, I, I would certainly be disinclined to put a, a light industrial across the street from individual homes and next door to individual homes. Unless I could be sure that it would be really true, so not just a privacy.
Right.
But I'm second guessing you now, so. When, and if you have a project, can you bring it to planning and zoning, we'll look at it.
Now, now, there's possibility, if you come off Kicker Road, or you perhaps not infringe on 13th to 18th, you may have, you may have.
Come through your own property.
Come through your own property some kind of way. That may be feasible, you know. But that's something that we need to see in greater detail, so that we can make sure that it's safe for the neighborhood.
Sure, okay.
Zach, if this was light industry or whatever he's asking for, I don't guess the people on the west side would mind. But the houses to the right, what would the buffer be?
Fifty feet?
Oh, it'd be pretty significant. I'll have to look it up. I can look it up right now for you and see what.
You understand, we're saying that.
Twenty-five to fifty.
Those three lots for stay there.
Fifty, fifty feet.
They're saying a fifty-foot buffer.
Right.
That would, I mean, those lots.
Lose one lot.
I mean, I would have those lots, lose one for sure.
Right. So, yes, I, I hear what you're saying. And so, so the reason for that, that request was not necessarily to develop those into actual structures, but just for a secondary egress for, you know, like, I guess, emergency responders or that type of thing.
Well, again, back to Ms. Taylor's case, you know, we're, we're, we're not going to change it here because it, we still know what it would be. And it's just in the venue anyway for that specific request you're making. So, again, I think you've heard from the commission that if you have a project, go through the process with the planning department, come before us as a body on a regular meeting, and we'll, we'll take it up.
Great. Thank you, yes.
All right, so Commissioner, all those in favor of retaining the current zoning, first staff's recommendation, and as the property is in use now, all those say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it.
And we'll update one. You'll vote one time, and we'll update all of them.
Okay. I think we're, that was a block vote.
All right, Commissioner. We are moving into some comments. Ms. Barth put in the first one. Yes, okay. This is, the comment is, I had requested this area remain single-family residential at a previous meeting. Happy to see this property and the two adjacent to it remain residential. And that was an older meeting. So just a meeting comment with no vote necessary. We've got another comment on Autumn Wood Lane. I think I'm going to have to go to the list of names. You can see, y'all, we have had a ton of public comment here. We'll go over to the Springbrook one while we're, while we're scrolling for the Autumn Wood Lane. This says, I've advocated retaining this area of Springbrook as neighborhood commercial previously. Happy to see the new map reflects this request. Of course, the commission voted to turn it NC, and so we have made that request. And then the last one from Ms. Barth, oh, as we type, no vote needed. The last one is of a similar vein along Autumn Wood, as we continue to scroll and scroll. And this comment, if we roll it up some, says, it is important that this property be developed in the future as SFR1. I am concerned that zoning that allows for more dense housing will stress infrastructure, including traffic issues near the school and through the Woodland Forest neighborhood. It is proposed to be SFR1, which is maintained. So no vote necessary on that. All right, we will move into the downtown area. Allison Grant at six-twenty-one Queen City Avenue. Her comment is a comment of concern, and she says, "I think the zoning should be downtown historic edge." Her comment is, "Our house is set up as a duplex. We are currently zoned R-four and would like to retain the ability to rent one side of our house going forward, even if we stop renting for a period of time. Because there are two kitchens in the house, we worry that our property value will be negatively impacted if we can't decide, if we decide to move and aren't able to sell with multifamily zoning. For these reasons, we request that the city change the proposed zoning on our house so that we retain our current property rights." Ms. Grant is here this evening, and I think this opens up a bit of a further conversation that we may not have had back in the March meeting when we did the downtown area. So, along this strip from College Park down to Ninth Street, on the east side of Queen City Avenue, there are a number of homes today that are zoned R-four or that are non-conforming duplexes. And so, that, that was part of the internal struggle in a lot of hefty conversations that we had with the Original City Association prior to our March meeting. What do we do with these legal non-conforming duplexes? And ultimately, that group pushed quite, quite heavily on maintaining the single-family zoning. Commission, you've got the opportunity tonight to weigh that a bit and chat about it, because Ms. Grant is correct. With that SFR three zoning, the duplexes that exist, if something were to happen to them, and they are zoned historic, you can see the historic dots on the map, but those duplexes that exist, that are, are well-known, you know, I joke about the single-girl duplexes, because I lived in this area for a long time. If something were to happen to them, we would have a very hard time building those back. So, Ms. Grant is here tonight to speak on behalf of her property.
Good evening. Thank you all for giving me an opportunity to speak a little bit about my concerns about this zoning change. We did not want to be landlords. We just wanted to live downtown and couldn't afford any house that didn't need significant updating. And so, when our house came onto the market, it is, it is, it was originally a dog trot with a breezeway in the center that was enclosed. And so, it naturally has sort of two sides that at some point were turned into separate apartments. But there is a doorway that connects the two. So, it can function as a single-family home, but it is currently set up as a duplex with two kitchens. And we have a tenant on one side, which allows us to pay our rent and pay for childcare while our children are young. And as our children get older, it's sort of perfect, because they can, we can take over the other side and stop renting it and turn it into a larger home. But we're also attracted to the property, because we've always aspired to work abroad for a year. If we had an opportunity to do that, we could go back and rent it out. If our parents, who are older, needed care, we could put them on that side of the house for a period and then rent it out later. If our children go to college outside of the city and we wanted to rent out the other side for extra income to help subsidize that, we had a lot of options and flexibility. So, that's one concern. But our larger concern is that there is a kitchen that was put in at some point. There's not flooring under the cabinets. If you've ever worked inside of an old house, you probably know that it's really always ten times more work to change something than you think it's going to be. So, if we had a house that we weren't renting as a duplex, but we hadn't ripped this kitchen out, and we decided to sell, which we don't plan to do, but you never know what will happen in life, we would have this property with two kitchens, but that was zoned a single-family, and we feel like that could negatively impact our ability to sell a house going forward. So, those are the reasons that we have our concerns. We just want our property zoning to not change at the end of the day.
It's tricky.
It's very tricky.
I'm not sure what, I mean, it's...
All right, staff, don't turn your head down.
I'm about to say, yeah.
Help!
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to, I want to, I know, I need to understand this for...
I mean, this is, this is, yeah, we never, this is getting deep into an issue that we need to...
It is, and, and this may be one that we roll into next month as well. Because, you know, a little bit of what Ms. Grant mentioned and a little bit of what I mentioned on the record just a bit ago, there's some bigger discussions to be had, especially in, and it's such a small stretch of property, but there are big feelings.
What's the, how many properties roll into this along, you said the official property?
That would be impacted?
Yeah.
All right, off the top of my head, I'm rolling off the top of my head, so just bear with me. You've got, you've...
Give me a rough number, five, seven?
You've got this property here, Ms. Grant's property, these two here along Audubon Place, and then there's a few south of Bryant near Eleventh that are not on the map. And there's, I'm driving, in my head.
There's a duplex. You called, circled the wrong one, I'm sorry. It's the one down from College Park, but...
I circled the wrong one.
That's right.
It's in the area.
My concern is...
Either way, there's, there's a handful of these, and actually, these along Audubon are tries and quads.
Ashley, I think you're right. I think, I would, I would prefer that y'all do a, do a exercise on this and do a dive-in and come back to us next month and let's see what we can do to drive fixes. I think if we've got that many people negative impact for this, we may need to look...
Well, and I guess, as always, Ms. Grant, just if, if something were to happen to one of those properties, if it burned, and it was zoned downtown edge...
Downtown historic edge, yeah.
Yeah, then something could be rebuilt there that we, that would not be suited, you wouldn't want next door, right?
So...
So, that's kind of our, what we're weighing here.
And I know some of those, that's some of the big feelings involved in this area, too. You know, the protections available, and, and we can, we'll chat about this now, we'll chat about it next month, we'll chat about it between these two meetings. The protections offered by the Historic Preservation Commission in terms of massing...
Or some barrier against that.
Yeah, massing scale and height allow those properties, even if it were zoned downtown historic edge, the Historic Preservation Commission maintains those limitations. And then the housing types are consistent with what is in that area today. And so, I think if we are, if we do carry this comment forward into the next month, I know I'll be speaking with Ms. Grant, I know the Original City Association will have some comments as well, and so, we can chat with them.
Please, please talk with them, but anybody that's got the vested interests, you know...
We'll do it again.
If it's something, it will blow up on us.
We did it ahead of the March meeting, we'll, we'll do it again.
So, so, Ashley, so if you have historic district requirements for build backs or new, you have to consider that with the zoning, wherever we leave it, right? So, right now, if we left it like it is, let's just say something burned down, could you build it back exactly the way it is now? Because you still would be subject to the historic, right?
So, yes, actually, yes. You can build it back, brick by brick, piece by piece, exactly how it is.
How it is today.
You cannot build back, like, let's say we have a, you've got, you've got the beautiful quaint duplex that has been around and stood the test of time and has intricate details and gables and cornices. If that duplex burns, that exact duplex must be rebuilt.
That's on the, only if it meets all the codes, right?
Also that, and so that opens up even more...
I was like, why would it be code now?
Exactly, Ms. Right. And so, that opens up more and more challenges.
Correct, that's right.
Could not be...
That's right, yeah.
What we would really like for you is to bring us back a decision, everybody's happy with the knowledge.
I know.
See you next month about that.
Just gave you more, just gave you more...
We...
Take your time, take your time, we'll give you a month.
Thanks.
Take two, if you need them.
No, we, we certainly look forward to continuing this conversation and bringing, hopefully, a resolution back that both the Original City Association and the property owners are, are comfortable with.
So, all those in favor of continuing this conversation, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Good luck, staff.
Thanks, Mr. Wright.
And, and Ms. Grant, sorry you have to keep at it.
That's why you get paid the big buck, right?
I'm sorry you have to come back, but we'll see you again.
All right, well, thank you. All right, the next, we are traveling over to the Eastern Bypass Bridge, and we've got a few comments in from Tara Smothers and Al Cavaness. Let's start with Tara's first, if you don't mind. We'll do hers first, because I know Al is present tonight, so we'll read Tara's into the record. It says, "I think the zoning should be GC, general commercial district. The characteristics of the surrounding properties and subject property make this property poorly suited for low-density residential uses. Ideally, the eastern portion of this property would be zoned commercial, with the westernmost twenty-five percent of the property zoned for industrial uses." And that is from Tara Smothers. And then, we've got another comment from Al Cavaness, and it says, "I think the zoning should be general commercial district. Because of the character of land use that has developed over the last fifty years, this property is not well-suited for low-density residential uses. I recommend the eastern portion of this property, sixty to seventy-five percent, be zoned for commercial uses, and that the western portion, twenty-five to forty percent, be zoned for industrial uses."
Ms. Grant, we've actually got one more that came in...
Yeah, I see that now.
And it's on the same topic, so we'll go ahead and let you read that.
This is very exciting. This is from Deborah Sealy, and it's a comment of concern. "I think the zoning should be, I think that's wrong." It says, "This is definitely not a residential area anymore. With the proximity to Bryant Bridge, a four-lane road, and industrial neighbors like New Core, this site is better suited for industrial, commercial, or business, not residential. Thanks, Deborah Sealy." I know Mr. Cavaness is here this evening on this property specifically. Y'all have any questions for us?
Currently, is any of that property occupied?
There are, there are, not on the property that they are, not on the Sealy property that they are concerned with tonight.
Between the lower blue dot and that one, four square.
These properties here?
Yeah, they are.
There are a couple of homes that are on that street. They are not the subject of the question this evening. The properties in question this evening, Al, please correct me as I get this wrong. We're doing this, we're doing this, 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 that.
But those properties back up to it?
They do back up to it, yes ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Al Cavaness of Cavaness Engineering, representing Deb Sealy and Charles Sealy Jr. We've been talking about this for a while, and it's, you know, before the Bryant Bridge, before two ninety-seven, this neighborhood was part of these other neighborhoods to the east. You had one big, large residential area there. Because of the two ninety-seven, the Bryant Bridge, of course, this neighborhood has gotten isolated and very small. If we're fortunate to have the Bryant Bridge, fortunate to have two ninety-seven, but a lot of times, when a major thoroughfare bisects a residential area, you'll get remnant areas that are no longer really suited for residential use. We don't have a plan, we don't have an idea. We're confident that the Sealy's would not move forward with any kind of residential use here. You've got traffic on the bridge, McRice Bridge...
Why, isn't it suitable, other than its proximity to other?
Ma'am?
Why is it not suitable for residential development?
You're, you're not going to be walkable to any other use. You're, you're, there's a little isolated corridor there, so you're not going to have, you're not going to be, you're not walkable to...
I mean, it doesn't seem isolated to me, that's what I'm, it looks like it's surrounded by neighborhoods all the way around.
So, so you're, you've got the Boy Scout property to the west, you've got New Core to the north and west. Of course, then you've got an industrial corridor there. And then, obviously, you can't cross two ninety-seven.
Right.
So, you've got, you've just, you've just got a small area in there that you, you know, is not going to give... You're not going to walk to a park, you're not going to walk to shopping, you're not going to walk to a school, you're not going to walk to anything like that. Conceivably, you could do a low-density multifamily in there, but there again, you've got, you've got traffic noise, you've got New Core noise. It's, you just felt like it's, it's more of a business retail site now than it is a residential site. I think maybe the Boy Scout property is going to be zoned GC as well, which is the adjacent property to, or more or less adjacent to the west there. That seemed to make sense to continue that zoning. And again, not having a plan to go forward, but being confident that the current owner is, has no plans to do any residential development.
Al, in the comments, it's basically saying more commercial or industrial. But in the, the thing the zoning should be is an SFR two. So, which one is it, I guess?
And, and I, you know, it, it kind of makes sense to me to make it more something that's compatible with whatever be the surrounding use, whatever the...
I think that was the...
You know...
That was Ms. Sealy's comment on that.
Right, that was the Al comment.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, they're in the residential business, of course, but I think this is another case, like Ms. Taylor's, it's, you know, it's zoned R-one, the most restrictive, as we always do here.
Sure.
If you want to change the zoning, come back to the plan, show us what you want to do, and then we'll entertain it.
Yeah.
You know, I think, it's got residential around it right now, and I'm, I would, your comments is that, why couldn't it be? But I disagree with they don't want to do that, but come back before us with an idea of what you want to do.
Agreed.
And I say, there's, you know, absolutely not a plan on the table for anything, so I don't, you know, we don't...
I mean, I think we'd entertain a group, I, I understand, I understand the concept, it's probably not practical for residential...
Yeah.
But it's hard for us to, again, I, you know, I don't think that's, this is what this process is for, a leased property like this, is that it means that we need to put some, a plan...
Yeah.
Especially acres like this.
This may be a staff question more than a board. Is this, given that there would be some commercial zoning there, would a, would a business retail-type proposal be looked upon favorably? Is that something you've been on...
I mean, given, given the right plan and given the right protection, it's a decent neighborhood.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I think if we, if we'd be comfortable that that option was truly an option...
Well, that's going to be a challenge, obviously, with the cut through neighborhoods as it exists now, so, I mean, good luck.
Yeah, exactly, okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Commission, all those in favor of retaining the proposed, retain zoning SFR one, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, Commission, on my notes, we've got four slides left, so I appreciate y'all getting through these this evening. We're moving into Cedar Crest, and we've got two comments on, I believe this is two twelve Cedar Crest, yes. So, the first comment is from David Furman Sr. Can we go to Mr. Zhang's first, because I know the Furmans are here this evening? So, the first comment is from Eddie Zhang, and he says, "My family and I live in two thirteen Cedar Crest and have for years across the street from two twelve, two eleven, and two ten Cedar Crest, and I'm in full support that two twelve, two eleven, and two ten Cedar Crest zoning district would be more appropriate zoned GC, general commercial, instead of the future used proposed SFR one, single-family residential. Should you need any confirmation of my comment, I can be reached at." And then the second comment is from David Furman Sr. He says, "I think the zoning should be general commercial district. Dr. Edward Hilliard Drive shops at Legacy Framework Comment. Two twelve, two eleven, two ten Cedar Crest, all vacant lots, based on the previous zoning. The majority of this property was MX-three. We believe that reverting back to a residential zoning SFR one is not only hurting the value of my property, but also not the highest and best use of these parcels. The corridor of Dr. Edward Hilliard would serve the city best as commercial zoning." Doc, or submitted by David Furman Sr. As a, just a quick, before Mr. Furman comes up to speak for his property, he is correct. This, if you recall, after the tornado... This, if you recall, after the tornado, we did some, we did some not smart things when it came to how we rezoned, and we did things like, hey, we're rezoning from the center line of the street. And so, in the Cedar Crest area, and we'll zoom it in, you can see the, the top portions of the Cedar Crest lots, that is our D one, a residential detached, with, which was similar to your R one zoning, but within the tornado districts. And then, the southern portion of that, those properties, was M X three. And so, we had a lot of properties after the tornado that had split zoning on it. And so, of course, in an effort to not, not do that, looking at the surrounding land uses and what had happened on Cedar Crest already with these two homes being rebuilt, I believe that is why S F R one was assigned for these. Mr. Furman is here, and he's, can make his case.
Thank you, Ashley. First, I want to quickly thank everybody that serves on this board, because it's a job that takes a lot of time, it's important to the city, and you're to be commended. Second, I want to apologize to the staff, because I should have been on this thing and engaged in it much earlier. We did meet with the staff on Monday. 212, 213, 210 Cedar Crest, as Ashley said, zoned M X three on part of the lot, and R D one after the tornado. All three of those lots are vacant lots, nothing on them. They abut Edward Hilliard. If you go on a trajectory to the east, everything, shops the legacy all the way down, general commercial. If you go south, then our property abuts the corridor that's zoned General Commercial or M X or whatever, on 15th Street. We're of the opinion that it, it's not feasible to come in here on an R one-type lot in Edward Hilliard Drive and 15th Street, spend, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars and make it a good use of your money. I mean, this is a commercial area. Realize there are people across the street that are in residential. They've been there, Eddie Zhang has been there since the tornado. He commented, he's already adjacent to commercial, he's fine. We own two of the other three lots. They're currently rental. We manage the third lot, which is currently rental. And now, the property that I've mowed for two and a half, I mean, for two times a month for 10, 11 years, is just their front yard. They look into the back of the drive-through windows on 15th Street. And we feel that this is not appropriate for this to be zoned R D one or R one. It's, and it was zoned mixed use prior to this, or at least part of it was. So, questions?
So, staff, currently, half his lot is on...
M X three.
M X three. We talked about the first three lots, did we?
Yes, yes. It's about an acre. If you develop it, you'll have to dedicate right away the city to the tune of 15 to 20 feet, so it'll still remain, though, about an acre there, yeah, right there. 212 is on Edward Hilliard, and the others go west.
You've got approval for the adjacent acre.
Well, we are, Eddie Zhang is an adjacent acre. And then, the other neighbors, we're, like I said, we manage one rental, and we own the other two. We are the adjacent neighbor.
Across the street, across, to the north.
Right. To the north, yes.
Yes, okay.
You know, you, you said if you live in the houses across the street, you're looking in the back of businesses, it's on 15th Street?
Yeah, yes, sir.
What's the difference in that, looking in businesses that's across the street?
Pardon?
What's the difference in looking at the back of businesses and looking at some kind of business that you propose to build across the street?
Well, that's kind of our thinking, is that, right now, it's just an empty lot, and it's grass. And like I said, we cut it every week or two, and the, those houses on that side of 14th Place North, the northern side of 14th Place East, they're just looking into the drive-throughs of those restaurants. There is no buffer. And so, and as I said, it's zoned mixed use, and we feel that we're being downzoned by being zoned R one. And I, I just don't think that most people are going to want to live in a house on Edward Hilliard Drive at 15th Street. And it's just not going to change. I mean, that neighborhood's not going to change in that direction.
You know, I might, in my opinion, I might consider the first lot, because it is on Edward Hilliard Drive. But when you're taking in the other two, you're, to me, it looks like you're encroaching on the neighborhood. We just eventually eat the whole neighborhood up.
Well, the, the issue there is, is just, for any type of commercial development to develop that's reasonably nice, it's hard to develop it on a, you know, single-family 12,000-square-foot lot. Just like, well, there are examples all up and down 15th Street. But that's, that's the issue there, is that you need enough lot to, to, you know, develop. And it's now zoned M X three, which is mixed use. It's not like, or at least part of it is zoned mixed use.
Staff on the, I mean, we always talk about buffers for commercial use with adjoining properties, like this parcel with the other parcel on 15th. I can't recall ever getting into a situation where you have a street, 14th Place East here. You know, we talk about buffers. What kind of buffer would be required for any kind of, protect, I guess, the north side of 14th Place East?
Yeah, so there wouldn't be any to the north. It would be something that the developer would kind of work on, but we wouldn't have any requirements. The street would kind of separate the two. It'd be the adjoining, so the lands to the west, you know, they'd have to buffer adjacent to, but not to the north.
What is our, what would be our buffers? What would buffer?
Thirty, thirty feet.
Thirty feet? The, the three lots, and then there's the fourth lot. He owns the fourth lot before the other residential, is that private lot?
No, we own it.
So, you own all four?
Yeah. And if there was a development there, the thought was that would be a buffer.
So, you're asking to rezone for three?
Yes.
And you still have a 30-foot buffer off of that, and the lot as well? You have the lot plus a 30-foot buffer, you'd be dealing with, right?
Say that one more time. I didn't hear you very well, but I think you said, could you do a 30-foot buffer?
Well, there, there, there's going to be a 30-foot buffer requirement anyway.
Right, right.
Again, that lot is not rezoned. So, you'll have that lot plus an additional 30-foot buffer that you'd be dealing with.
There, there needs to be enough land that you can do that, right? And, and there would be, but there probably would not be if you had just 212, as Mr. Pugh said, because remember, when the city got, if you go to develop 212 Cedar Crest, the city will require you to dedicate right away, and I didn't look that up, but it's probably 15 to 20 feet on Edward Hilliard, as I recall. So, your lot is going to be reduced by pulling a permit, by having to give that right away to the city. Am I correct on that, guys?
If you do a subdivision, yeah. If you were going through the subdivision regulations, we'd have you dedicate right away.
I'm sympathetic to this proposal or suggestion. But it also is, also kind of falls into that category of the other folks we've been talking with tonight about what would it look like, what would it sit across from, how would it, you know? I don't know how you'd get in there from Edward Hill, in and out from Edward Hilliard Drive, frankly, given how close it is. So, I'm, I'm kind of inclined to say that makes some sense to me, but I sure would like to see what would, what you would do with it before I could say yes. Is anybody else in that category?
We've kind of been insisting on that messaging tonight, we don't know.
Right, it's going to be a thing here.
Yeah, it is a thing. I think, I think we all are sympathetic to what you're saying, but I think we need to see more detail to have staffs involved to say, all right, what do we do to protect any residential property to the west or to the north?
Right.
I'd, I'd want to see that, that's going to be the, I think that's the challenge for any of these redevelopments that we're talking about, even Ms. Taylor's property. It's like, how do you change it and not negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood?
And that 15th Street intersection there is paved, all the time.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I think there'd be some ingress egress challenges with it. I'd like to kind of see how it was going to impact it before I changed it. That's just my thought.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for your time. You'll probably have to see me again.
All right, Commission, based on previous precedent we've set tonight, I think we all sounded more comfortable waiting to see a more definitive plan. So, that being said, is it the vote of this body to retain the S F R one at this time? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, ayes aye.
All right, Commission, Mr. Furman has a couple others in the area that we will read into the record as well and bring up for discussion. So, this is on Fernwood. If you will pop up to the top real quick. It's, well, I think the zoning should be S F R four, single-family residential four. The comments are, framework comments, 33, 33, 27, 23, 19, 17 Fernwood, 105 and 115, 19th Street East, 1928 and 1934 Forest Lake Drive. Seven of these nine lots are vacant land. Based on the adjacent zoning trajectory of the S F R zoning to the east, north, and west in the University Place area, we feel that these properties are more appropriately zoned as S F R four as well. The S F R zoning, S F R four zoning will allow these parcels to be in keeping with the development in the area. Given the narrow depth of this row of lots, S F R four would allow for development of rear-loaded parking, single-family homes. 19th Street East is a narrow street, and rear parking would eliminate on-street parking, thus preventing emergency vehicle blockage, and eliminate traffic issues within University Place School, traffic in the morning and afternoons. Mr. Furman is here. Do you have any questions for us?
Thank you, Ashley. I think we, we own the lots that Ashley mentioned here, and most of them, seven out of nine, are, are just land, there are no homes on them. If you look to the east, you see the dark yellow or whatever, those are S F R four, correct? And that trajectory, and if you look to the north, it's the same, and then all the way to the other side of the school. And this street, 19th Place East, is narrower, more narrow than normal. I don't know exactly what it is, but it's more narrow than normal. And the lots are also not very deep. They range in depth from 120 to 105 feet in depth. In S F R one or R one, your front and rear setbacks, I think, total something like 65 or 70 combined. So, it leaves you with a narrow build area. And what you end up, if you develop these in R one or S F R one, is you're going to have on-street parking, and kids trying to, that you're listed to, trying to park in your front yard. And what we would propose is to do a rear-loaded type of zoning, where we could have one egress and one ingress on First Avenue, and then one on 19th Place East, that would come into the rear, and all parking would be rear-loaded, and there would be no street parking. We could, under S F R one, four, because you have a narrower setback, pull the houses up close, like, say, 15 feet, I think, is the front setback to the street, and just create a nice city street with sidewalks and parking that is not there. You can't, if, if you have on-street parking there on both sides of the street, an emergency vehicle will be blocked. If you go immediately south to Fernwood Street, where everything is R one, and all those are rental except one house, you can't get down that street on Friday and Saturday night in an emergency vehicle. Also, you have University Place Traffic for School there in the mornings and the evenings, and on-street parking would be also a great impediment to that. So, we would think, and we believe, that S F R four is a better zoning for this, so that you could develop it in the fashion that we're talking, single-family lots, pull close to the street, all the parking in the rear, only one way in and one way out off of two separate, you know, egress, ingress points. Questions?
Sorry, we were, the whisper crew over here was checking our, the lot sizes to see if per square footage, these would meet an S F R four. They, they are 12,000 square feet total, but to Mr. Furman's point, they are, they're squattier. They're a squattier lot than your normal R one lot, to that, to his point.
So, is what he proposed acceptable in this area?
So, what we talked about with Mr. Furman, and you'll see in each of the individual zones, their lot standards as well. They don't really get relief from how narrow, or the lack of depth of the lots, until you jump down to S F R four. You've got 35-foot front and rear in S F R one, 70 feet total. S F R two is, takes up 65 feet total. S F R three does jump down to 55 feet. But then, once you hit S F R four, it's only 35 feet. You've only got a 15-foot front setback in S F R four. The trouble that we discussed with S F R four is that it does allow for duplexes and townhomes as well. Those can meet the character of a single-family neighborhood, but they are different from S F R one, two, and three.
What lots are we talking, what specific lots are we talking about?
Can you, can you show them there, Zach? Right. Pretty much right there.
Oh, five, seven? I thought it was just three.
No, there's one, two, three, I think there's, there's five lots there.
Oh, I see.
The one that is closest to that drainage area is actually owned by someone else, I believe.
That's a drainage area?
That, that, that right there is a drainage plume that goes from the south of Forest Lake.
Hey, real quick, I did a printout for everyone, and you turned to page maybe six?
Yeah, there you go.
That's, everything you see is our lot, except for the house that you can see on 19th Street East, two lots over from the drainage ditch, that's owned by a family in Virginia that's a rental house, if that helps.
By virtue of the lot size, this is really the only scenario that can be working in this area. By understanding.
Are you saying that, that a single-family residential home cannot be built, a reasonably sized, single-family?
Well, let me, let me interject that what we're asking for in our mind, S F R four, is a single-family residential home. It's just that on a, it's a more, it would be a townhome that was rear-loaded with parking, in other words, you're parking the back.
Right.
We don't own any non-single fam, for what it's worth, we own no non-single-family properties. We own no multifamily whatsoever. And this would just be a perfect street for these types of houses, and the lots kind of require it. If you remember, if any of you were around when Second Avenue was developed, the lots are so small, every one of them had to go to Z B A just to build a house. And this is not quite that bad, but if you look on that trajectory to the east, you look on the trajectory, this University Place neighborhood, that's just the character and substance of it, and it could be really nice if, if it was done like this. And I would contrast that with Fernwood Street to the south. If you drive through there, you'll see what I'm talking about. They're parking in the yard, they're parking on each side of the street. An emergency vehicle cannot go down that street on Friday or Saturday night, cannot be done.
I'm familiar with this, this area too, because it's in my district. So, there is a lot of density here, so I can, I can agree with Mr. Furman on it.
You know, I think this, in my opinion, this is one that fits what we're trying to do to make it a better, better product in the area. I think the limitation of the lot size restricts tight housing that can be there. And if this fits, if it, if it's round peg and round hole, I think it'd work. I think the limitation of the lot size restricts tight housing that can be there. And if this fits, if it, if it's round peg and round hole, I think it could work.
Steph, I'm looking at the printout, and that, those lot lines are drawn a little differently than they are on what I'm seeing on the screen. At the end of Fernwood Court.
Gotcha. Ms. Hornsby, what they, what the Furmans have is from NLS Tax, which may not be the official, like, we've got the official parcel lines, and so I can, I can show you.
See what I mean? Okay.
So what the properties, the properties we would be looking at are through to this house and then these corners here.
Okay, okay, now I can see it. Yeah, all right.
Yeah, what, what you're, what you're seeing is the drainage ditch, yes, ma'am. We put the hydrology on there. No, no worries.
So my, my hearing, based on what the comments from this body up here, staff kind of agreeing with petitioner? I mean, it sounds, it seems like you are.
Well, it seems kind of odd to zone something in a way that it can't be, can't possibly be reasonably developed.
Right, that's kind of, that's where I was going with that.
Commission, I think the, the only, staff does not have a hesitation in this request at all. I think if our faces are making any hesitation faces, it's, we've got one little buddy left over on that piece of property. So I believe, like, I think you would be well-suited if you would like to vote on this tonight, if you feel it's the most appropriate thing, absolutely. And as you've seen from previous months, we will make that change to the map. It will be out there for us to even take a look at, for us to continue to analyze and see if perhaps with this change, is there another change that might need to happen to the map as well?
I mean, this isn't the final sub.
Correct. No, we are not, we are not voting to bless this and send it to the councils tonight.
But if we did it, then you, then Steph could go back and analyze it in more detail.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right, Commission, I think we've got kind of a consensus on this, that we're in agreement with the petitioner's request to take it to SFR4. If that's the case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, Commission, Mr. Furman has one more, and in the interest of time, yes.
Two more.
Two more, well, two pieces of property, one more dot. And so in the interest of time, I'll stand up here as well and then read that in and walk off to the side. So this is, I think the zoning comment, or the zoning should be GC, general commercial, framework comment, 1511 and 1519, which are, excuse me, please. No, you're all good, are these two pieces of property here, so where the dot is and the little property to the, that was a bad one. These two here and the dot. 1519 is a vacant lot. Based on the adjacent zoning trajectory of the general commercial zoning in this area, we feel that these properties are more appropriately zoned as GC. This will allow these parcels to support the 15th Street corridor for use and development rather than the current proposed zoning of MR2. Alley to the east of lots, east of the lot, houses contains high-traffic dominoes and Starbucks drive-through site. 1514 Third Avenue, one block to the east, on the same trajectory as 1511 Fifth Street, was rezoned GC at last meeting. Mr. Furman is here.
Thank you, Ashley. I'm back again. The two lots that we own here, one has a house on it. It adjoins the general commercial corridor in 15th Street East. The other is an empty lot that we own. They all back up to an alley that runs between 15th Street and 16th Street. The alley has a dominoes on it that has zero parking. They park religiously on me. And then you just rezoned to the east the lot that is there between the alley for Starbucks. It was, I think, residential, and you rezoned that so Starbucks can build a drive-through there. And then further to the east, you rezoned one for Mr. Thompson, I think, last meeting, to GC. And so we're just asking that this property, which is in keeping with this whole area, the same trajectory on 15th Street, and be rezoned to general commercial. And what that does for us is it helps us if we are able to ever consolidate this property, and there's still a buffer there on 15th, on 16th Street to the residential.
Is your district, you got any comments? I'd like to get your input on this.
I'm not sure. So where is the local?
Well, we own the two lots that are to the south. We own the, the two lots that are south on 16th Street, and so that would be your buffer there.
Buffering yourself.
Okay, okay, got you.
Pardon?
You're buffering yourself.
We're buffering ourselves.
And those are residential?
Yes. I'm not sure if it's, I'm not sure that it's like R3 or, I'm not sure what the zoning is there.
I don't want to make a decision completely on this by myself, but that whole area seems to be, from a commercial standpoint, really revitalized. Getting rid of that tire and getting the Starbucks, and it's got so much potential there, but you're going to need some depth.
Right, and nothing can, like, in order for Starbucks to develop, you had to rezone the residential lot behind the old tire store there. And literally, my property abuts the alley where dominoes, I mean, on Friday night, they got 50 drivers through there, right? I mean, it's like a street. And, and the city made it one way to accommodate them, and now Starbucks is going to come and take that alley, and it's just in the back of my property, and it's not really feasible or desirable to spend, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to build a residential property there. And so at some point consolidation will have to occur, I believe. But there is still a buffer on 16th Street because we own those two properties, and we did not, we're not seeking to rezone those.
I, I agree. I'm going to be open. I don't have any, you know, the staff is, okay. I can see there's a lot of growth and potential in this area, and once again, it's a dense area, so, and Domino's already.
Who owns the Domino's building?
Who owns Domino's? A guy named Zan Hall. He owns them all. He owns the business and the real estate.
How about the, is that one parcel or two?
It's two. Charles Spurling owns that parcel.
The most patrons of Domino's. The most patrons of Domino's already have the park where the proposed Starbucks.
Yeah, it's, it's a coming problem for me. It's a coming problem. I mean, he, he, Zan probably on a Friday night, I know during football season, he has 50 drivers.
What's, what's next to Domino's?
Courteur, I'm not, my French is not that good, so.
That's the old bank one.
Yeah. Courteur, Courteur.
It's a salon.
Oh, it used to be. Last time I was out, I saw it.
I got my French, I got my French in South Side, Alabama, so I, I don't know how to say.
Again, that area's ripe for redevelopment too, so, anyway, but.
It's a salon, but I never see anybody there.
Yeah, you're right.
But it looks nice. It's well-kept.
I think that's awesome. Again, I'm going to defer to the counselor from that area, and if she's good with it and supports it, then I, I feel your coming pain as well as the business, I mean, people start parking on your property, drives you crazy.
Well, it's, it's, that alley is the busiest alley you'll ever see for an alley because of the two, the one business is already there and the one that's coming.
Wait, the one that's coming.
Yeah.
All right, okay, I think we got a kind of consensus there. Commission for us, we have a request to rezone this to, you know, rezone it to GC. Do I have a motion and a second for that action?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
You've got one more.
Two for three, not bad.
I was going to say.
No, we're not three.
We've got one more.
But wait, but wait, there's more.
There's one more.
Want to take five hundred and go home?
You sure you don't want to just quit while you're here?
This one's easy. This one's easy.
So, Commission, just in the quick interest of time, we've got this comment, and we have two more after it, and then one person has signed up to speak.
Let's, let's finish it.
We'll finish tonight?
Yeah, yeah.
So this is a comment of support. I believe the zoning should be SFR4, framework comment, for 26 Avenue East, vacant lots. Based on the location of this property adjacent to multifamily in the area, as well as other multifamily in the area, we are requesting a zoning of SFR4 in lieu of SFR. We believe that allowing small-scale residential development similar to the property to the southeast is appropriate. The property today is zoned RMF1. This proposal is SFR2, and so SFR4 would likely be more appropriate for this.
What you have there, and I don't have any comments that I gave you to, for this, because it's pretty simple. There's a couple of lots that we own, and they're currently zoned multifamily, so we could build an apartment complex there. We don't own any apartment complexes. That's just not what we do. And to zone them R1 would limit what we could do with this property. There's an adjacent large piece of property to the south where we could purchase part of that lot. It's an homeowner for, out of town from Texas that has called us and offered it to us. There's some infrastructure problems here because the, the drainage plume that comes through Cedar Crest goes underneath Veterans Memorial and runs through the front yard kind of my property, right? So you can't build on top of that drainage plume, and there's some infrastructure over in this adjacent property. So you need to have a smaller footprint for your house because you can't build on top of the city's drainage plume, right, in the front yard. And in this particular area, we believe that it's a better investment to build smaller, single-family homes that people can afford as opposed having an R1 type of zoning. So that's, we didn't, we're not asking for multifamily because that's not our business, but we do think RMF4, right? I haven't learned all the new lingo, is the most appropriate zoning here. So I'm inside in my three minutes. My wife would be proud of me. Questions, please.
Steph, a few comments from you guys.
Well, I was going to say, Commission, if you do, if you are going to vote to change this property's zoning, I would actually encourage you to expand it to all of those properties from Veterans Memorial Parkway down to this one, so that it is a consistent zone on that entire piece.
Any issues? Just based on the building conditions. Any, any issues from anybody else?
Any comments?
Okay, so, that being said, we need to kind of modify this. So we're saying, I don't know what those addresses are of that property, but we're going to, we're going to rezone those four. Mr. Furman, then we need to capture the other four, correct? What you're saying, Steph, or just the one? All four of them, so the, okay, I agree with that. Okay, so, Commission for us had a request to rezone the four parcels related to this comment, adding the additional four lots to the south to capture all the 26 Avenue piece to SFR4. Do I have a motion?
Can I, can I confirm that for you? We're talking about from where this dot is, north to Veterans.
But you also made the comment about going south, correct?
No, I said from Veterans, south to this.
Okay, I thought move, okay, all right. So.
But that, two northern.
Two northern, three northern lots.
Who owns those lots?
You know, I don't know. I used to own them, and I sold them to someone, and I, I don't know.
Other issue, will we need to contact those people?
No, it is fine.
It's an insurance agent in town. I forget his name, but they're three-bedroom rental properties right now.
Yeah, they're rentals.
All right, so back to scratch that comment. We'll, we'll stick with the comment request of rezoning to SFR4. Those four joining lots. That being said, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
Wait, there's no more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fifty, that's pretty good.
All right, Commission, we've got two more comments on the map tonight, and as I mentioned, one more, one more individual has signed up to speak. Mr. Pons, if you'll clear that. Oh, I can clear it.
What are all these other dots?
Those are dots you've already handled.
Oh, okay. We'll say we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so this comment is a comment of concern. It's from Matthew Casmer, and it says, "The narrow strip of land to the west of MLK, between Sixth Street and Fifth Street, should be designated as open space. This will help anchor this area as the gateway to the west end, allow for park space along the extension of the Riverwalk through this neighborhood, and provide for green space for the townhouse development being built on the east side of MLK. Further, multiple residents have voiced a desire for this space to be protected as green space during the various meetings in February and March of 2024." And so that, Mr. Casmer is not here this evening. What he is discussing is a strip of land that is owned by the city of Tuscaloosa that runs along Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, where we acquired land for the Jack Warner Parkway, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard expansion. The city of Tuscaloosa is not interested in rezoning its property to open space at this time. We are making a substantial investment in Burrell Odom Park, which is shown here, and you've also seen the, the expansion of the Western Riverwalk. Creating more park space requires more maintenance, and so we are just not interested in open space for this property at this time.
It is an area of concern, so let's vote on this, guys. Based on the city's recommendation of not maintaining an open space, I vote we, our motion is to keep as immoral. All of the in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, and Stephen Dempsey has waited until the end, and we appreciate you, Mr. Dempsey. He's got a couple of comments on pieces of property along 39th Street East. What he says on 2233 39th Street East, "I think the zoning should be MR2, mixed residential 2. This is a two-acre parcel currently zoned RMF1 with one duplex on it. The proposed change to SFR2 would make this property non-conforming and significantly decrease the value of the property. The equivalent zoning would be MFR, which is what a previous version of the map showed. After speaking with Zach, I understand the hesitation with the MFR zoning, which allows for a max height of 60 feet. I agree the buildings of this height would not fit in with the surrounding area. I believe a good compromise would be to have the property zoned MR2, which would keep the max height at 45 feet. The MR2 zoning would allow for a broader range of multifamily housing types, which I feel would be better suited for the area. The property has 455 feet on-street frontage that would require half-street improvements to be developed. This would be a significant cost that is feasible with higher-density zoning, but would not be worth it under SFR2 zoning." And Ms. DiDomenico, if you'll go to that next one next door, since that is also Mr. Dempsey, and mostly the same comment, but the beginning of it is slightly different, comment of concern, "Think it should be MFR2. This is a small apartment complex consisting of 18 units, currently zoned RMF1. Proposed change to SFR2 would make this property non-conforming. Equivalent zoning would be MFR, which is what a previous version of the map showed. When I purchased the property in 2012, it was a neighborhood I saw, but after a complete renovation, it greatly improved the street. I personally manage and maintain all my properties, ensuring quality residence and no negative impact on the neighborhood. We've never had any crime issues here. After speaking with Zach, I understand the hesitation with MFR zoning, allows for a max height of 60 feet. If the property were to be destroyed, building back at the height would not fit within the surrounding area. I believe a good compromise would be to have the property zoned MR2, which would keep the max height at 45 feet and have the material standards ensuring a nice multifamily housing option." And that's from Stephen Dempsey, and he is correct. RMF1 is what the property is zoned today. There is that existing apartment building. And so, Commission, Mr. Dempsey is here, if you've got further questions for him.
My gut on the, on the first piece of property, such a large piece of property. I'd want to see what future development would look like for our rezonement. I'd kind of like to see how's it going to fit in with the neighborhood. Now, I get the second parcel, I kind of see that's a small parcel.
And developed.
And developed, so I kind of get that one, but the larger piece, that's, that's my hesitation on making that change until we have a definitive plan. Any other thought?
I think this, I think we would be conducive to looking at something, but I'd like to see the plan.
Yeah.
Always prior to it.
Mr. Dempsey is here, if you'd like to speak.
Those are our comments. If you want to come up and pitch it, go ahead.
Stephen Dempsey, Dempsey Real Estate, eight seventy Redmont Drive. I'll try to be brief. The two-acre parcel is currently zoned for a multifamily use. Tomorrow, I could present a plan, you know, and build a, you know, a, a building up to a hundred and fifty feet, which would be completely inappropriate. After speaking with Zach, you know, I, I realize there is some concerns, um, about, you know, a large apartment complex there. But at the same time, it, it would be harming me, um, taking away the value of the property. And so I'm just, I'm asking for an even lesser zoning, I consider a lesser zoning than, um, than what it is today.
Sure, Ms. Hall? No?
No, no, it's not. But I'm comfortable with staffing on this, especially with that big a lot.
Scroll back downstairs, that's, this is for the second parcel, right?
But I, I think if, if we could see a plan, um, we would.
Yeah, I mean.
We would be more inclined to.
So, so you're, we're, we're currently, we're, current proposed zoning is what? I was right.
Scroll down to show us what you got in the comments, please.
Current zoning is.
On the comments.
Scroll down.
Current recommended.
Scroll to the top, back to the top, um, yes.
Current recommended zoning is what?
SFR two.
SFR two. He's wanting to go to M R two.
And the current zoning on the property is R four today.
Say again?
Current zoning on the property is R four today.
R four. R four.
Oh, my bad. R M F one today?
R M F one.
On the large parcel or the small parcel?
On both.
Okay, make sure we're on the same page.
And he's wanting to go to M R two, is that what?
That's right.
On both of them?
That's right.
The one we already have a development on, which would be M R two?
So both, I'll, I'll come and hopefully clarify where we got, where we're going. These two pieces of property.
Right.
Are what we're looking at. This one with the buildings on it has all the buildings on it, this one doesn't have a building on it. There is a building on it, I'm sorry. Uh, it has a duplex on it, and so both of those properties today are zoned R M F one. Mr. Dempsey is right, uh, an early version of this map showed that property as multifamily residential, and we just felt that was way too intense for this area. Uh, and because of the fact that it was very lightly developed on the large parcel side, and you can see this extra dot here, uh, we discussed, uh, property, we discussed other zoning of some apartment buildings in this area, but that property today was a non-conforming one. These two, um, are R M F one today. M R two is, if we maintain existing zoning today, M R two is the, is the best pick. There are material standards involved, um, and you have to build what you can park and your height limitations keep it at a neighborhood scale.
We heard staff would be okay with an M R two.
Yeah.
Okay, and. All right, we gotta take votes on each one individually, correct? Which one we taking first, the larger parcel or the?
This is for the smaller parcel.
Smaller parcel, first, because it has the development on there. All right, Commissioner Forrest, we have a request to, uh, change that to M R two per the petitioner's request, and staff's approval, or agreement. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have it. Second parcel, uh, same, take the S F, take the M R two. Staff has no issues with, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner, I believe, and Ms. DiDomenico is going to clarify for us, but that is actually all the comments from the map tonight. Um, we'll scroll through them really quickly, or she'll do a, a refresh, and we'll scroll through them so you can see that we have tackled, um, we've tackled everything, and I appreciate the heck out of all of y'all tonight, um, from a map comment perspective. Now, we do have, um, there was Ms. Grant signed up, and there was an additional, uh, individual who signed up for public comment, Murray Colvin, he is still here this evening. Um, if you'd like to open the floor for public comment.
Okay, uh, one person wanted to speak?
Just one, yes, sir.
Who's that one speaker?
Mr. Colvin.
Mr. Colvin?
Yes.
Please come forward, come to the microphone.
Thank you.
Need your name and address for the record, please.
I will give my name and address, sir. Anne Hornsman?
Mm-hmm.
You're in my district?
I don't know.
District one? District one?
I'm district four.
Okay, I was just looking for.
Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Mairey Clayton Colvin. I live at, I don't live there, I owned, I used to live when I was a kid, at ten twenty-three Thirty-Eighth Avenue. I also lived at One Reese Court over by Stillman College. Can you put that on the screen?
Where, where do you live now, sir?
I live at thirty-seven Nineteenth Ninth Street, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, in Newtown.
That's what we need to know, we need to know where you live currently, we need to know where all you live.
Excuse me?
We need to know where you live currently, not where all of you live, just currently.
I live at thirty-seven.
Okay.
Thirteen Ninth Street currently.
Come closer to the microphone.
Thirty-seven Thirteen Ninth Street.
Okay.
Tuscaloosa, Alabama, thirty-five four oh one.
We got it.
That's where I currently live at, but I own, is that running my timer? I own ten twenty-three Thirty-Eighth Avenue and One Reese Court. I started a wounded warrior project on both of those projects, but they are on one lot. The city of Tuscaloosa don't understand that the addresses are so old, because it's Newtown address, that there is a One Reese Court. They were saying it wasn't. I'm trying to build this. It's a duplex, it's the same thing that I lived in when I was a kid. It had one side there and one side on the other side. It was a garden home or whatever y'all want to call it. I have the plans for it, I've been doing that since July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. I have Parkinson's, so excuse me, I'm here. I've also brought y'all this. This is ten twenty-three Thirty-Eighth Avenue and Reese Court, they're all one lot. But there are two properties on that lot in this, in the deeds. So all I want to do is build a wounded warrior project on the ten twenty-three Thirty-Eighth Avenue and one on One Reese Court, so that I can house wounded warriors to go across the street to Stillman and also attend the University of Alabama. They can walk from there to the amphitheater. So all I'm trying to do is find out from Zach, is that R four? Like he had wrote on a note when I first came in in twenty twenty-one. And if it has changed, and if it has changed, then please let me know. But the addresses out there in Newtown where I live at, at those addresses, the city don't understand those addresses are in the county. They don't have it on their mapping. So now, by them not having it on their ma- mapping, all the addresses in District one need to be looked at, because nobody knew that One Reese Court existed by the city. It does, I grew up on it.
Mr. Colvin, we're, we're at the end of your allotted time, so.
Okay.
So here's the thing, we, like we said tonight, this is not a venue for making inquiries like that. That's what we need to take the staff, get clarification on, but this body can't do anything or, we can't provide you any relief.
But you can't tell me whether it's R four zoned or not?
Yeah, I mean, we can sit down and talk about it, for sure.
That's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking.
What's the zone of the property, Zach? Or, is there multiple?
He okayed R four back in twenty-one.
Well, the thing is.
We'd be happy to talk to Mr. Colvin after the meeting.
Yeah.
I think they'll be able to help.
Yeah.
They won't.
We, we can't, we can't answer anything tonight, or here.
Well, what is this body for? Please tell me, what are we here for, zoning?
We're the Planning and Zoning Commission. We, we address property change requests, uh, rezoning requests. We're involved now with this framework process, where we're the body that starts it, creates it, approves it, and passes it on to City Council. That's what we're doing tonight. We're, we're strictly trying to wrap up the, what has it been, four or five-year project?
Right.
So it's just a, this is an overview, generalization of the entire city and the zoning maps and the codes for all of it, so.
Can I ask you right now, is it R four zoned?
I, I'm not gonna answer that question now, we'll talk, we'll talk about it after this meeting.
Yeah.
I can help you out without, after this meeting.
So, good luck.
What's going on?
All right, Ms., Ms. Kreitz, our next steps?
Yes, sir, next steps, uh, as we wrap up, and I appreciate the extra time that you have allowed this evening, um, August twenty-eighth, we will continue map wrap-up meetings. So what we will do is we'll go back, make these changes that we've discussed this evening, either maintaining, um, you know, the, the things that you have voted on. The map will get updated, we'll send out that blast again that says, hey, take a look at your map. But also, we are going to start discussing the text again. Uh, Ms. DiDomenico and Mr. Pons and, and the entire staff team, uh, have been redlining, uh, the full version of the zoning text. And so we will be able to upload that, send that out for review, uh, so we can continue to go through that, make sure the text reads the way that you want it to read. Uh, and then September, again, we will continue those map wrap-up meetings, that text wrap-up as well. And hopefully, we will be in a place where we can vote. If not, we will roll that into October and ask you to vote in October. So that's where we are looking forward. Tell your friends, tell your neighbors, tell your enemies, tell whoever you need to. We're close to the end. Uh, so, Commissioner, again, uh, framework.tuscaloosa.com, of course, your one-stop shop. I appreciate you immensely. Mr. Wright, you have anything further?
Promises, promises.
Promises, promises.
Meeting adjourned.